Ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to Fort Meade City Staff City Hall number, Town Hall Meeting Number Two. Thank you all for coming, taking time out of your busy schedules, to come to discuss the proposed lien amnesty program that will be on the city's May fourteenth agenda. And we are going to present to you what we envision the plans to look like, what the city staff will present to the commissioners, and we would love to have your input. By a show of hands, the last time we did a, a question by card, which went extremely well, actually. Do you open for a question by card, or do you want to come up to the mic, understanding you have two minutes? Or let's be at least considerate of each other's time. Would you prefer the question by card? I personally like it, because it doesn't identify who's speaking or asking the questions, so they are more, yeah, they're more anonymous, so you can ask whatever you'd like to ask. And if you don't want to question by card, if we have time at the end, you can come up and give a brief question from the podium. So with that said, welcome, and thank you all for coming. At this time, we'll have our invitation, and we'd like to give a hand clap for our Commissioner Jim Watts, who's here in our company tonight. Thank you so much, Commissioner.
Ladies. Please, please. Bow heads, please. Dear Lord, we thank you for this opportunity to come together. We thank you to these leaders of our community that are going to stand here and take questions. We want you to understand what's going on in town. Dear Lord, we ask you, hear us in touch with us tonight, compassion and understanding. But we all do what's right for our community. But north, south, east and west, we are one town that needs to come together in the name of Jesus Christ, Lord and Savior, amen.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Commissioner Watts. At this time, I'd like for our city manager, interim city manager Dustin Burke, to come up and provide greetings on behalf of the city. Please, interim city manager Burke.
Thank you, Greg. Welcome, everyone. Thanks for being here again, for our second Town Hall. The last one was great. We had a lot of interaction. I think we were able to get a lot of information out to the community that was helpful. I hope, again, that we will be able to answer your questions that are important, get information out to you that matters to you, clarify anything that's unclear. That's it, really. It's just it's an opportunity for you to ask questions and hear directly from us about our thoughts. So, those are my greetings.
Thank you so much, city manager Burke. So, at this time, as we did the last time, we will hand out cards. If you'd like a card, raise your hand. If you need anything, let us know also. And while I'm passing out the cards, I would like for a very important person in the city with whom the city cannot run without. He's a great, knowledgeable young man. He's always on top of his job. He's committed to his job, and we really appreciate him at the city of Fort Meade. Mr. Code Enforcement Officer Rick Simmons, please come up and introduce yourself and tell the audience and the community and the world, actually, about Fort Meade's code enforcement, what you do and how you do it. Rick Simmons, please.
Well, my name is Rick Simmons. I've been with the city for a while, and my job is to enforce codes in ordinances. I do that by talking with people, by trying to get people to come into compliance, and if necessary, citing them, and unfortunately, if that doesn't work, they go before the magistrate, and that will eventually lead up to a lien being placed on the property. Now, I've been told that people are saying that they were told they could not get a permit if they have liens or fines on their property, and that is not true. Just say, for example, you've got a bad roof, and you've been cited for it. You can get a permit. You need a permit to do with it. Same thing as Timo and Sheen, or whatever. So, it's, that is a total inconvenience with what's put out there saying you cannot get a permit if you have fines or liens on the property. Now, the city is speaking about lien and fine amnesty. I don't know my thoughts on that. I'm sorry. Thing I'm afraid of, more than anything, is that it would, people would take that out of context, and then the next thing you know, city looks like a junkyard, because they think nothing's going to happen to it. But I am still, and whether it was amnesty or whatever it goes to, I am still going to be writing citations and violations, irregardless. So, I don't know how all of this is going to work out, but I guess they're going to give it their best. So, that's really what I've got to say. And I can take any questions if anybody has any questions.
Unless y'all want to wait for the call.
No, I've got a question.
Wait, wait, wait. We haven't gotten that part yet. She can't ask a question about something she doesn't know anything about yet. We haven't explained it.
It's a code enforcement.
Okay, sure. We'll get that. Once we're done, let us know. All right. So, thank you so much, Mr. Simmons. We appreciate your input. We've met over this several times. I, first of all, want to reiterate that this is not a code enforcement leniency program. It's a lees and fines amnesty program. And within it, we're actually going to be harder on code violations, because it becomes the honest system now, where you don't have the threat of fines and liens, but don't take that for granted. And then, after the longer period of the plan, we're going to have, you know, Rick has been very gracious with a lot of people we know, but we're going to be much less lenient after the amnesty program, because I think a year is enough time, and the city is going to see what resources are available throughout the community to help people. We know we have elderly people. We know we have people who are in hardship situations who need help. So, we're not going to just put it on you. We're going to make it open where you don't have the threat of fines and liens hanging over your head when you would, you know, normally do what you would do, you know, properly. You know, we're all members of Fort Meade, members and family. So, that is the program. And let me just explain the program to you. I wanted Rick to introduce himself and give his opinion on the program. This is the program. Fort Meade has, and we all know, I mean, we can look out the window. We're here at the Plaza Center of Fort Meade, and we can look out the window, and we can see the empty units on our Broadway, our main commercial corridor. And several of the buildings, I don't know how many, because we're still working on getting that recorded, but several buildings have code violations. Also, we have several properties, and we're thinking about how do you get people who haven't responded, who are having a hard time, who may want to get out of their situation but cannot. How do you reach out and help them? Well, you have a amnesty program. That's, many cities are doing it. I think there are at least, at least that I could research, ten cities in Florida right now. Lauderdale, Fort Lauderdale, Opa-locka, I think Fort Myers Beach is currently doing one. But they're a great strategy. It has been helpful for many cities in resolving code violations. And beyond that, even, we have a lot of people who are interested in buying properties in Fort Meade. But we have properties that are probably worth $20,000 with a half a million dollars in liens on the property. And so, what are we going to do with that? We either have to let someone come in and buy it, let the person clean it up, or take it over. Now, the city is not in the real estate business. We're in the vision and building a better future business. So, we don't want to own real estate. Every property that the city owns, we don't collect taxes on. We need tax revenue, and we want tax revenue. So, that is our mission, is to create that revenue. So, let me explain to you the program. This is the program. We will have an application process. If you have fines or liens, again, fines or liens, we will have an application process that if we can verify that, and now this is how it works. You come in and apply, but you have to, before, you will have no impediments to fixing your property up yourself. If you need a permit, and you're not getting your permit fast enough, or we're not responding, let us know. We'll make sure you get your permit. If you need help, let us know. We'll see what agencies are out there to help you. But with that said, we will do all that we can to help you resolve your issues. Once those issues are resolved, once those issues are resolved, we will wipe away the liens. And they're going to take a hard cost. And why do we have to look at the hard costs outside of the liens and the fines? And the hard cost could be a part of the lien, but the reason we have to look at the hard cost is because it is, the city had to expend money. It is money that we extended, not, you know, fines and liens are just infractions. I mean, fines are infractions, but the hard costs are for demolition, maybe for cleanup, maybe for, you know, other things, attorney's fees or what have you. We will look at those at a kind of case-by-case basis. And I will tell you why. We have at least two properties with over $50,000, $60,000 in liens, and the properties are worth $30,000. What was our rationale in running up hard costs on a property that we can never recover? I mean, that is saying, the city, at the end of the day, no matter what happens under God's Son, is going to lose money. We're not doing that anymore. We will assess every property, every situation, every code violation, with a vision of, we have to do this smarter. And so, when we get to a point where we say, well, you know, they have to pay the hard costs because the city extended the money, we will never get the money back. So, going in, your best case scenario is to lose $30,000 or $40,000. We will not put the city in that situation again. We will do all that we can to avoid that. Now, the issues that cannot be avoided, if there's a safety or health issue, those cannot be avoided, and we understand that. But otherwise, if it's, you know, cars in the yard, if it's general cleanup, and those type of things, we are going to, at the city, look at, with a vision of, where are we going with each property and not getting so far upside down, it doesn't even make sense for us to foreclose on the property. Because even if we foreclosed, got the property, and tried to re-market it, or it would take us 30 years to recover the taxes on that property. So, that's what we're looking at, and that's why we want the amnesty. You can't just keep running downhill and not, you know, slow down and see where you are, because, you know, pretty soon you'll end up crashing at the bottom of the hill. And two, we do know that we have some people who have been, I learned this today, in all my years in government, that after 20 years, the liens go away. But we have some people who cross that bridge, whether have, might, you know, might have in the past, wanted to sell. We do have in Fort Meade, we do have a lot of family properties, where the heirs don't live here anymore. They want to sell the property, and the city is saying, well, we're not going to work with you on the fines and liens. The property's $60,000. The fines and liens are $100,000. How could you not work with someone? You can't, and this is, this is the problem. The problem is, you cannot, the city, government cannot create a problem where their real estate is upside down. And what does that mean? That means that we can't create a situation where it costs more to come in here than people can make, because no one will come. Even if it's a first-time home buyer, a family coming in, why would they come to Fort Meade and spend twice as much for a property, or twice as property's value, that they'll never realize, instead of going somewhere like a Barter, or Lakeland, or somewhere where they can live comfortably, get their money's worth, and be happy with the house that they have? So, I said that to say, Fort Meade going forward into the future, and I can tell you this now. If I'm here only until tomorrow morning, between tonight and tomorrow morning, Fort Meade will be moving to towards a smarter and more universal view of their code enforcement and liens. Now, I will say this to Rick, and I've said it to him before, so I don't understand the question. Rick is empowered to do his job and do it without impediment. He can find a lien as he sees and understands. But if someone takes care of those issues, and comes back to the city and fills out the application and says, hey, I need these fines and liens alleviated, we're going to be happy to do it. We're going to be happy to do it, up to 100%, up to 100%. Because there's no reason why we can't work together as a community and resolve these issues. There's nothing complicated about them, except the city's approach to them. I've never seen this anywhere. I've seen some, you know, bad lien situations, and I've seen, and actually, I have seen, actually, that's how I know we can do this and we should do this. I have seen situations where people, things got out of hand. We see it on TV all the time, you know, where, you know, organizations like Red Cross comes in and helps an old lady paint up her house who's had, it's just, that's it. That's all we need to do, is come together in a lot of these situations and issues we can resolve. So, that's what the program is. It's going to be a $125 application fee for residential, $250 application fee for commercial. And what you'll do is you'll, and if you have hardships or extenuating circumstances, we can waive that too. Because we're not here to make money off of the, you know, off of your misery. We're here to help you get to prosperity. So, if you have a situation where there's code violation, fix it. If it requires a permit, come into the city, apply for your permit. We will make sure it is expedited. Expedited. I said that. Expedited. And you fix your issue. Then you pay your fee. You complete your application. You bring it into the city. Rick will go out and check your property. If what you say is true, Rick will come back and advise the city manager. The city manager will waive without question, not without, can't say without question, but very easily, it should be, if you really complied and worked hard to get to where you needed to be, up to 100% of your fines, and we will look at your hard costs. I will say that there are, and there are different situations that determine the hard costs. We're not going to, you know, have anybody, you know, dying under the pressure of the city's lien system. It's not going to happen. It's not going to, because it's unnecessary. There's a lot of ways to get people to comply with code requirements without crushing them under the pressure of the local government. So, when you come in, you'll do that. We'll look at the situation. We'll make the considerations. We'll give you a release of lien if everything's been resolved. And, you know, there's a great story. Someone, I was driving actually off of, on the north side here. And there was a property that was overgrown. Someone came in and just bought it. They had to buy it cash, because they can't go through tighter. They bought it cash, and they fixed it up. No interest was put in the city. I'm like, hey, you might love Fort Meade as much as I do. I don't think it's possible, because I love Fort Meade with all my mind, heart and soul, but you might. And so, if you make that type of investment in our community, we're going to say, we didn't even have to come and ask. You just did it. Yeah, we'll work with you. Why not? We can't require anybody to come in this town just to lose money. It doesn't make sense. And we will not, and I'm going to tell you this now, if I'm at the city until tomorrow morning, we will not continue to make other people pay for our bad decisions. And that's a promise. If we make bad decisions, we will be accountable and take responsibility for them. So, that is the program. And also, a part of the program is too, if someone is looking to sell their property, call the city. We will work with you. Make sure you get that sale done. Call the city. If you are, and it's weird, because we have non-performing properties that don't pay anything and cost us money. And if you have an investor or a family comes in and says, hey, we want to live there, and we'll fix it up and pay you taxes. What's the loss? What have we lost, other than having to admit to our bad decisions? So, with that said, the program is explained. We are not, let's just be clear again, we are not easing our code requirements. That's not happening. And I will tell you this also, at the end of this year, this program will, if it passes, it'll start on the day it passes, and it will end on June 30th, 2025. If you have not resolved your code issues by then, we will have much less leniency, and we will actually work harder to make sure that people are, you know, in compliance with the code. So, those two things are happening. All right? Thank you all so much again. Now, we're ready for questions if we have any. Yes, dear.
Okay, my first question is, we already had the form in place that you were talking about. If anybody wanted a lien lifted, or fines, or whatever, all they had to do was come before to the city and fill that page workout. So, that's, no, that hasn't changed. The only thing that I understand that has changed is now it's going to be a cost to fill that form out? Okay, number one. Number two is, I'm thinking about all this stuff, and I forget what I was going to ask.
Well, we have time, so.
The code enforcement. And this is, I'm not downing you or anything like that, don't get me wrong, but I just don't see you out in the community as much as I used to. There's a lot more going on in the community and no cleanup. So, I don't understand where you're going with your code enforcement. But as far as the liens and stuff, is that going to go strictly for y'all, or does it still have to go before the commissioners?
Thank you. Thank you so much. When you see the, when you see the resolution that'll be out with the agenda Thursday, Thursday night or Friday morning, it will be the city manager that has the authority. And even with the, that program, so this is the reason why, government is funny. Everything is funny. And I'm going to tell you the funny part about it all. There are a lot of things that exist. I've been in government for a while, and I've written legislation, and it's been effective and it's done its job, and about nine months later, I see someone else like, at the same governing body, write the same legislation. I'm like, hey, you already resolved that issue. But, you know, so, I said that to say this about this one. There are programs that offer 8515, I think that's what the city offers. There are programs that offer 9010. A lot, most cities do 9010. Some cities do 7525, where they, you know, alleviate 75% of your fines, or 90% of your fines are 85. Most programs, you don't go back to the commissioner, because that would be redundant. You know, that would be, like, we're going back over the mill again. And the reason why this one is going to be different, first of all, it's 100%. Because if you have a house, again, that's worth $30,000, maybe $20,000, because it might be down to land value at this point. twenty, because it might be down to land value at this point, it has a million dollars in fines, and we do a ninety-ten program, straight up, straight down. Yeah, you can reduce it to a hundred thousand dollars, but it's still not moving because the land value will never be there. And so someone may have to wait until they maybe buy a house next door or try to assemble pieces of land, but the land value will never be there. So it, it's pointless. And, and, and the city, they have, and then also, we're going to take the discretion out. Just flat up, this is where it is. No one has to question, no one has to look at the person's property. As far as should we, no matter judgment, it is, if you bring in application and we can go out and see that all of the code violations are resolved, that's it. We're waiving the fines. We're waiving the fines. Uh, we're, you know, we don't want it to be a free-for-all, uh, but that's, you know, some, if we can help ninety percent and, you know, ten percent, uh, but again, and, and I do apologize, I'll do, you know, we'll, we'll do more rounds. Rick is, I, I, I will defend him in that respect, that we, we've seen him out, uh, if you all, I will say that you can't make, the state law says you can't make the code violation report without saying your name. I know some people don't want to say their names, so if you just say, hey, guys, go look in this area or that area, we'll try to pay attention to it more. Uh, I, I think, and then too, we're going to get involved proactively. Again, we are all neighbors. Fort Meade is a very, very small community. So we're going to get involved more proactively in trying to help our neighbors dissolve their code violations and issues. And some of them, eh, it can be a little, as little as, and Rick says he doesn't really try to cite for it, but not having window screens, that's a code violation. But those are very good points. Uh, this is why we are doing the program this way because it's, first of all, better promotion. The guidelines are very clear. And, and, and we have a saying, uh, Intuim City Manager Burke has a program called T, Transparency, Efficiency, and Accountability. Now, this is all out in the open. This is, we, we have, it's been sent to the news, it's been on social media, and, and we're having a time hall. Did we do all of this for the other program? No. So now everyone knows the cards on the table is very transparent. We're efficient, just bring us a piece of paper, say you got it done, we'll go by and we're accountable. If we let your fines go up to five hundred thousand, a million dollars, that's our bad. It's not your bad. So with that said, Rick, I want you to respond, but we don't respond to residents saying we're not doing our job well, so let's make sure we, we're respectful of the residents.
One thing I can say, I am doing my job.
No, you, you are, but I see, you don't have to say that, you don't have to say that. We got your cover, we got your cover.
I had to file proof. Um, but another thing, uh, what was I fixing to put it on? All of y'all that know me, I always say, don't want your money, we want you compliant. The only reason people get fines and all that is because they don't pay attention or ignore the violations or whatnot, and then I have no choice but to take them before the magistrate. But ninety-five percent have gotten where they'll talk to me and, or call me or come see me or whatever, and if they do that, I work with them. They don't, and give them extension, give them more time, and then they come in compliant because, because there are few, very few, that don't pay attention or don't want to talk about it or make no attempt or anything like that, they're the ones that wind up going to Forte Magistrate. Um, we have dropped in the last three years considerably on the cases that go before the magistrate because people are coming in compliant. Uh, if anybody's got any questions? You still got questions?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to say, um, uh, listening to, uh, what you're saying.
Do you step up here now?
I don't need no mic.
Okay.
I'm good. Everybody knows who I am. But I just wanted to say, uh, when I first got my letter about, uh, a parked car with a, uh, no tag on it.
Yes, ma'am.
And I got real angry. And I was like, uh, own your own property, what harm is this doing? Because not knowing, I didn't know, uh, it's a lot I don't know because I've been gone a long time, but I'm finding out now by call.
Yes, ma'am.
And I was real angry, but, um, all at the same time, when Monday came, I said, I'm going to find whoever this person I need to talk to. When I went there, they said, oh, he over there. So when you was coming out and I was coming in, we, you know, getting together. So it, it, the whole picture changed. My attitude, my anger, uh, because, uh, when I, you approached me and I approached you and I told you the situation, um, it was good. It came out good because when I told you why the car was there and no tag was on it, and then I explained to you the situation, and then when you said what you said to me by complying with you, that worked out good, and I was okay with that. But see, I didn't know, I didn't know, I had to come to the source, you are the source, and find out what was the problem with it being parked there, but after you told me and then after, uh, I, uh, received what you were saying, I told you, explained to you what had happened, why the tag wasn't on the car, and then you did, you gave me time, uh, she was on the phone while I was there with you.
Yes, ma'am.
And then, uh, you say, if it's not solved by then, you get back in touch with me and you're, you're extended. But for what you did on yesterday, uh, for me, uh, with that car there, I appreciate it, I really do. And I stepped, went beyond, like I called you today and told you I went another place and tried to see what I could do to help that situation. And you accepted that, again. So, you know, I, I just thank God for giving me the favor with you to, uh, help me with that problem that I had, I didn't know what to do. So I'm glad I got that letter and, uh, and I'm glad, I'm, I'm happy to meet you.
You too, ma'am.
But I thank you for doing what you did.
See, that's all I ask from anybody. Talk or speak with me.
Yeah, that's what you said, just go fly.
Come and see me, um, because we don't want the money or anything.
Yeah, you're saying that too.
We just want compliance, that's all we're looking for. Anybody else?
How do you get a sixty thousand or a hundred thousand dollar lien for twenty thousand? It seems kind of arbitrary. I mean, what are you, what are you basing the?
Those costs, like, uh, he said, were, some of them were, had financial property, some were legal fees, some were court costs, I mean, it, it's money that the city has had to spend.
All right, the court costs would be a hard, a hard expense, right?
Yes, attorney, attorney fees and cleanup fees are all, uh, hard costs.
All right, so, but one, I'm, two, I guess two questions now. So attorney's fees would be considered hard costs?
Yes, sir.
All right. My, my question is, how do you, if, if my house is not in compliance, how do you come up with all of a sudden, I owe you a hundred thousand dollars?
That, uh, attorney fees and things like that is what comes from, uh, city administration, that doesn't come from me.
Okay, so the, the lots you said was worth twenty thousand dollars and there's a seventy thousand dollars, there's, there's attorney's fees involved in that?
I don't know any lots that are worth twenty thousand, they're all more than that because it's big building going on, but like I said, I don't know, it's, it's above me as far as legal fees and, and the approval of all of them are hard costs.
Because it just seems like it's not, they don't seem hard.
Can I answer his question?
Yes, but, but, wait, just one.
I'm, I'm suggesting that some of these build up over a ten-year period.
Right, okay, so we, we can get to that. So this is, this is what's happening. And, and, uh, Ms. Arnold, that was actually a wonderful question, and, and this is why it seems like we're, we're replicating what was done before, but again, it wasn't done properly and informed. And first of all, thank you all for coming, and, and, uh, ma'am, you just said something even better. I didn't know. Most people don't. And you get a little more so you're going, like, ah, let me ignore that, I'm working, I get home at eight o'clock at night, I don't have time to deal with the city of Fort Meade. I get it. I get it. So how do we get sixty thousand dollars in liens? And this is why we're going to do the amnesty. In this one year time, we will be working in the background to make sure that this program, all of our code enforcement, has standards and guidelines. So if you do have a property and you say, well, first of all, when we start filing it, we'll have to do an assessment of its value. Because to get over, if you get over twenty-five percent of a home's value, you're probably cutting into their mortgage, if they have a mortgage, it's very hard to take a property with mortgage, so that's besides it, but you're starting to get upside down quickly. And we're not going to do that. So we're going to come back and assess, hey, what are we doing with this property? There'll be monthly reports, uh, about the properties. We'd have monthly reporting, we'll look at where we are with fines and liens and what happened, and we'll be looking at the property's value, and we'll also ask the question, what are we doing? Where is our goal in, in, in dealing with this property? Uh, and so, you know, there's, there's a, a lot also that goes on in the background, but that is the basic question is, do you have a vision for what your code enforcement is? And it can't just be, even the police have a vision. It can't just be enforcement. It has to be compliance. And the only way you make compliance work is, is you make it make sense on your side to the voters. Because at the end of the day, not only are you not getting taxes, but you're losing money when we try to collect, uh, uh, from these guys and the house value, if we take it on and the house value is not worth it, because that's the only choice we have. Because no one can buy it, no one's buying a, a, a two-bedroom wooden house for a million dollars, it's not happening. So, so that's where we are with that. Um, uh, let me very quickly read the questions. Uh, I have one statement, this is a brave start to beautifying our city, we want new businesses, et cetera. This is cleaning up, but the property will make our town more friendly. All right. We've got a positive statement here. Mr. Burke, Mr. King, staff, you are just, uh, just like the Martin Daydream team. I don't know about that. That's what is all right, but I, you know, I take a long lunch sometimes. No, just joking, I don't take lunch at all, actually. But thank you all so much for the encouragement, we really appreciate that. Uh, and it's a lot of them, you know, uh, I'm not talking about how hard we work, but we all work very hard. Uh, Commissioner Watts, I want you to have a, you have clear time to speak for as long as you want.
Whatever, I will let you all lock it off.
Yes, sir. So you can speak for as long as you want, take up the rest of the meeting, you know, this is your community, you have to make these decisions. But I just want to add, answer a couple of quick questions, great questions, by the way. How many properties have liens, fines, or the code? Great question. We don't know. How much are the fines? We don't know. We're working on a system now to digitize, setting up a system to digitize the files, we're still working on a filing cabinet. We're going to put everything into a computer system. And I'm going to tell you this, just so you know, if we can't figure out how fines and liens got on people's properties, they're gone. We're not doing this anymore, we're chasing our tails. So, so with that said, we don't know. Uh, we will hopefully have it by the city commission meeting, and I do apologize if we don't have the full picture, but we will have a relative picture by then. But this is going to be an ongoing process, that's why we're doing the lien and fine amnesty program to give us time to get these things in order because it should be an answer, uh, questions answered. The next question is, can the public request a list of properties with liens and fines? Absolutely you can, it's public record. Can the public request a list of properties with liens and fines? Absolutely you can, it is public record. All right? Uh, and, and I'm going to tell you what's going to be, where the, the things that's going to come out of this, investors are going to come to Fort Meade. And, you know, you know all those like speculators and, and real estate guys all the time, but what it will do is quickly bring out property guidance up. And just to have your property guidance up, electricity deals still there, so, so it's going to be some big, big stuff coming out of this. Uh, one last question before I ask, uh, Commissioner Watts to come up and speak through, what is the purpose of the application fee? How will you pay for the amnesty? Why do this now? The first question, the purpose of the application fee is, and it will be, it takes us work. This is going to cost us work, we may have to get ten people, we don't want yet. You know, we're already at the city, we probably have twelve people in the city hall, ten, eleven, we have eleven people on staff in city hall. So anything that we do is, is kind of sort of in, in an invitation for work. So that the application fee will be covered at. But if you're in a hardship or have a senior of the circumstances, but also too, I will tell you, you know, not many people appreciate things that are given freely. You know, we'll get somebody to come in and drop off the application and we don't see them again until June thirtieth. And I'm going to tell you this, if you really want to get hit with fines, you put, drop off the application and don't come back. You put, drop off the application and have it resolve your code violations. We will have, and we will make sure, because you've given them enough time, that you will not be given any considerations in the future. None. Because we're not given this time, we're a very small staff, we dusting myself and Rick, if we let him, work twelve, sixteen hour days easily. The next question is, who will pay for this amnesty? The city is already, and some of these costs, don't get mad, but have been spent, some of these fifty, sixty thousand dollars in hard costs have been spent ten years ago. There is, no fines and liens don't have a cost, it's something that the city imposed. Uh, we, we realized this week that the city is budgeting for fines and liens. You know, it goes back to the days where, when the police department budgeted for tickets, we were like, this is a thousand dollars a month in speeding tickets, and it got to the last day of the month and they had, met their quota or maybe, they just go out and sit in the curb and write tickets all day. So we don't want to be that kind of state. We want to be a free state where you don't have to worry about people coming in your house trying to make money off of your hard work. We, you, so, so that's, eh, we're not losing any real money. You know, we shouldn't be making money like this, we should be making money on property taxes. On, and, and, and the way property, what property taxes are, is to repay it to the city for the value we create in your property. So we should be making money off of our hard work, working for you. And the last question is, why do this now? I think I've explained, we are going to clean up the entire process for code enforcement, uh, we can't keep string, uh, stringing our properties and our property owners, there's a lot of properties that whoever asks a question about how do I get a list, clearly it's interesting to us an investor, I'm going to just tell you right now, when you buy a property, we're going to let it be, here's your tax bill, let it be, you know, your tax is going to go up next year. But that's why. People will come to Fort Meade and invest in Fort Meade, and Fort Meade can grow, and so that's why we're doing this now, for growth and for better financial. Uh, uh, Mr. State, yes, sir.
Can I come up and ask you just a couple short words?
Admiral, a steel commissioner. Commissioner Watts, please.
I could just call him back later.
Yeah, I know you can, Commissioner, we, we, we're on YouTube also, so take your time.
My question is, uh, is my understanding that you leave, that you could do away with hard costs and fines, uh, by, uh, manager?
Yes.
And not the commission?
Yes.
I really think the commission has to do away with fines and, uh, hard cost fees. But we do have a, a lien forgiveness in place now. And, uh, and Mr. Wine calls the question, the hard cost, the big fines come from the fines, not the hard costs. The, the, the big growth is from the fines. That's because people that get cited will not take care of the problem at the beginning, and they will not take care of it the year following and following. And so the, the, the problem is not getting cleaned up as well as it is right now. But, uh, I think if we investigate that.
Uh, thank you so much. Yes, and, and, and the big numbers do come from fines, compounded fines, you know, I think at some point it gets to five hundred a day. But the hard costs, the sixty thousand dollars, which is a bigger problem, the sixty thousand dollars can come from, uh, attorney's fees, and, I mean, that's what we have, attorney's fees, uh, and other things. And I don't know how we have attorney's fees and we haven't taken a property, but that's something else we'll assess. Uh, the, the other part about it, we do have a program. We're not denying that we have a program, we don't think it goes far enough. Uh, I will say this, and it'll be in the, uh, agenda item for consideration for everybody's review, the state attorney, Florida Attorney General, uh, released two opinions that the city commission can delegate the authority to waive liens, uh, and fines, uh, to someone else as long as it's not a private party. Uh, in the case of our program, it's our city manager, and it will say city manager, designate, so it could be Rick or it could be someone else, could be public works because they know the codes and, and things like that, so that is.
The commission appoints.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, that's, that's what, that's what the, the, uh, resolution was due to the region, commission appoints. Uh, and they'll give that, but it is, uh, there's been several opinions from the state attorney general and, uh, Florida, it's a part of Home Moon Charter also, actually and Florida, it's a part of Home Moon Charter also, actually code enforcement, island charter, uh, excuse me, Home Moon Charter. So it's to the municipalities and the counties, they control their code enforcement. And then the authority to waive the liens, even though we do have a special magistrate, they're working at the effect of the commission. So the commission can say, hey, in general, we want to do this with our program because it is their program, and we do have the authority. But that information will be in the agenda item, because, you know, we did do some of that. I will say this too. Uh, with Ms. Arnold asking, hey, don't we have this, and Commissioner Watts? There's nothing more than the sun. I learned about these programs twenty-five, thirty years ago. It's just that we have to make it clear, we have to make it make sense. The current program at fifteen percent, again, you know, let's shave it down to fifteen percent. You've got a million dollars in liens. Uh, yeah, so what are we gonna do with a hundred and fifty thousand dollar property that's worth, at, on its best day, thirty thousand dollars? What are we gonna do? We're gonna take it back. And we definitely lose the money now because we gotta relist it, or do something else with it that takes even more of our time. Whereas if we can give the people an opportunity to, especially if it's an investor, I don't agree with waiving the hard costs, uh, all of them. But if it's someone, you know, and we have this in Fort Meade, and we know it. We have people who park their car in their yard at sixty-seven, sixty-eight, maybe Alzheimer's or what have you. That car hasn't moved, the tag has expired, now we're going to buy another lien. And I know Rick has given a lot of discretion and grace to a lot of people, but it's sitting there collecting fines and liens. So to say to them, when they get it together, or if they're, they have children that come into town, if they have a sibling that comes into town, and say, hey, I would resolve these, and to say, well, no, we gotta give you attorney fees, ah, you know, it's, you box yourself into a corner. You're piling up money you'll never get back, ever. And if somebody can tell me how we can get this money back, I'm all ears. No one can explain how we can get it back. No city has ever gotten it back in fifty years, that I know of, unless they had some money fall out of the sky. Uh, we're not in that position just yet, but soon. Uh, do we have any more questions? Yes, Mr. State.
Thank you, Greg.
Yes, sir.
One thing that comes to mind for me, and I'll address this to City Manager Mr. King. It's my opinion that everything should start with a motion. Someone has an idea, and any one of us, if we were committed, could stand up and say, I think we ought to do so-and-so. Somebody else says, I think we ought to do so-and-so. I think we ought to develop a, a program to reduce fines and liens. That's somebody's idea, okay? Somebody needs to make a motion in a meeting, okay? My opinion is that you and Mr. King should have presented this program to the city commission, rather than to us, or both. And some commissioner make a motion that we start this program, and we draw something up, and if it passes, then you know beyond a shadow of a doubt that the commission supports you, and the money that you spend on getting a resolution or an ordinance drawn up is not wasted. Does that make sense?
Thank you for your question. You've said that before.
Yeah.
But that's not the way it's always been done. If you go back and look at the minutes over the years and the years, things got on the agenda without there being a motion. For example, the sale of mobile home park came to the commission because they got a letter. It wasn't, let's get a motion and get this on the agenda. It just got put on the agenda. You know, we had, um, we had a town hall, or we had a workshop about fire assistance fees. And, oh, there were some people really angry that we weren't being transparent, and bring it to the people before we brought it from the commission. So now we're bringing it to the people. But, so, we're not making any decisions today. We're talking about some ideas that we have. Right, this will go to the commission. The commission will either make a motion to accept, to reject, or to modify. But this is how we start ideas, before we get to the meeting. I think we should have ideas fully fleshed out before we get to moving, a lot of times. And this is, this is one of those ideas. This isn't just something we put on the consent agenda. It's not, or, we're not just signing an interlocal agreement that's just gonna stream, you know, screen through. This is, we need some, we need your feedback, you know. This is, some people are really passionate about these liens and this code enforcement, and, you know, if we can get these, these big feelings out first, we can have a more orderly meeting next two decades.
It's still my opinion that this group is not large enough to be representative of the town, and that if it comes to the commission, then it's formal presentation, you know ahead of time that draw, you're gonna draw this up. Have the attorneys spend time, hours of work, you guys are spending time, and it may fail. I assume you have approved all the commissioners to where... Where they're not there approved this idea.
Yeah, that's...
Okay. So by having, by having a vote, a majority vote, from the commissioners to go forward with this, do prevent you from making mistakes. I have another question to you.
Well, I'd like to respond to that. There's this idea called the wisdom of crowds. We've all seen Who Wants to be a Millionaire, right? And it gets to the point where they ask the audience for the answer. And they're usually really technical answers, but we, you know, it might be a history question, but we don't expect the audience to be full of history majors. But collectively, they come up with the right idea, they come up with the right answer. And so this is kind of, we're polling the wisdom of crowds. We're trying to find out what do the people want, because if you, if you have a large enough crowd, they're gonna make a better decision than a small group of experts. So while our commissioners are very, um, well-informed, some of them have been on the commission a long time, they know the rules, and they are an expert in a way. I still think that the people, the wisdom of our crowds, can have us to have a better solution, so while somebody gets to the commission meeting, we won't have to, we'll know what's not gonna work. We don't want the commission to make a decision without polling the crowd, and it coming back bad. So we'll get the information out now, and I understand that this is not a statistically significant sample, but YouTube could be. I mean, how many people are watching now?
This is, in relation to a presidential poll, this is more people. It's more people.
I mean, what you're doing is taking a poll, and you're completely polling Donald Trump for being the next president of the United States. We won't know if he is until we have the elections.
No, no, that's not how everything works. Do you have, do you have a lot of questions? No, 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 that's why we did the polls. Okay. What other question? What other question do you have?
Thank you. The, one more one. I agree with what you said, Greg. I made a comment very beginning. I made a comment to the last city manager. I made a comment to a number of people that the best way to solve a problem with fines and liens is to get right down to the bare bones of the hard cost and move on. You know, if it's a five-hundred-thousand-dollar lien, and the city's got thirty-thousand dollars in it, you need to try to get it. You've already said that you may resort to that if somebody is hard-nosed about not doing what they're supposed to do. Okay? Um, do we have, and this, this question has to be asked. Do we have any commissioners that are involved in this process as far as having family, or them personally having a, a fine or a lien or a hard cost that was being done away with because of that? It might not be a problem with abuse of, uh, representation.
I think we all know that there's commissioners with liens, and we can discuss whether they were, they were applying judicially correctly. Um, we've got people who saw that discussion. Um, the way it occurred when you run the program, it would not directly impact any commissions. Do you agree? But I want to address this idea that a commissioner can't look for something and fill it with some, because you're all willing, the commission all willing to retire. And the commission all willing to owe the taxes, and the commission all willing to pay. And then it's a, the matter was solely one commissioner. I didn't say you got a market, but because it's a global one, I don't have the same feeling. Thank you, Mr. State. So, I, I will be, this is my last thing here, for all the attorneys, we also represent the election. But it's sad we don't get to the number of votes and most of the votes. That's all. We have a convention that we cannot notice in the past and the after. We make five-day court of justice if someone is not here. We can't have time in court immediately, or we're not interested. So that's all. No truth, no mistake. I can do this for years. To this staff that has all four, and I don't know if Commissioner Watts is with this, or straight, but Commissioner Watts, the official is one of the laws. Um, one person. If I asked him to do anything, and if he, as a commissioner, as a member of the city staff, I would make that. But as a human, this is so, this is our job. To the which I believe is in this, for the, for the, for the people of the country. And A, the first one's a lot of this, that, this, did you ask the duty? Who we are, that after this, this is for our citizens. Now let's basically, while we're under the rule of action, action. We need to make one point. If we need to settle one, we're not gonna have to shake that, I mean, the past will come in the past. And that is to pass, unless a revolution or a protest. So that's a thing we need to make up for in the courts. But others, those who have a session, say, we're gonna have a meeting. And that's a, for one, for a day. We present the person, now let them back in for a little bit. For a second, and that's a little bit of shit, in fact, in the city. That's, that's the latest, to take a move to the time of the courtmates. We've got a lot of time. And it was our job to retire this town, while we take care of the officials and the revolution. The message will be inside, and about all people in the nation, and they change within the time. They get ready, the day, I don't like this, so, can't change. Yes, everybody else, exchange the tax, we can go white, and we're there. We own now, but not for a person here. And I will, there's one, I will, and I will, and I will. And today, there's one, welcome to the million-dollar property, that's a thirty-thousand dollars. There's none of you. Welcome to the billion-dollar property, but I'm gonna tell you, one of the laws of liens. That's a one, a thousand dollars. But, that, if someone's gonna go like that, I'm not talking about any people, but that's how you're gonna say. But you're gonna tell them, how do we solve that without anything on all this? But I'm a person. I'm a person, so this is how we have to, so you can take as much time as you can, as soon as possible. But there's a lot that has to happen. We have to get these properties thrown tax-free, and we don't want to elevate and impugn, let me. Let me, the law doesn't actually, the city hall, all day, really targets. So we have to, on our own, us. And we're all, the listeners, after this, our, our job to use, for the officials, and for the reference, and the officials, the light, I guess, are using. First, I'll refer to the matter, inside our agency, the machine, at the house, if it don't work it. But we're making, we're getting this to persons, we're paying that part. So that, it can be studied. I believe it can basically be used. How many people on the road? How many people on the road, say, when you go there, and often, probably find it, because we're not, such, two, two percent. So let's try to, we're making, we're, for the election. So eight, five, seven, eight, it's not four, three, five, six. I think that's two, uh, they, six, four, zero, and six. So we're initial, so, so, and we're, and we're, so you take a look, and you know, a lot of it's a little bit. You say, that idea is in it, and you need to go, moving your whole day to straight. Maybe everyone does, you need to go, move, change. Only one, that's the only, only one. That was all I had, that's it. Listen, my own, or what I said, something I said sharply, I agree with, and I continue. No, I would, I would, we are, we, we ain't ashamed of it, see. You came to my house, next to the boxes, even with what you say, God, we should get into this back. We will never, shall, we can't, for, 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 and we have, we have two town halls, thank you. And I find you a lot, but you know, the people that work, and we have a lot of it, too, but we have two town halls.